Good afternoon, and welcome to the Joliet Junior College Regular Meeting of the Board of Trustees dated December 13th, 2023. I'd like to call to order, Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Ellis?
Here.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
Okay, we do have a forum?
At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting.
We are also joined today by the President and CEO of the Grundy Economic Development Committee, Nancy Norton, who we'll hear from later. At this time, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And Dr. Namoo, can you lead it today at the last of the year?
Two, okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 1.1, Communications. Kelly Roder Tenelli.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am so thrilled to be here again before you for our December meeting and even more thrilled to introduce our community partner and guest, Nancy Norton. Nancy is the President and CEO of the Grundy Economic Development Council, has been for some time, and has just been, her and her team have been wonderful partners to the college. And so, we've invited her here today to share a little bit about what we've done over the years. And I do want to share with you, I remember when Dr. Namoo was first coming to JJC, he and I were talking about what are some of the critical organizations that he needs to be a part of and involved in, and that was at the top of our list. And so, I think it's fitting today to invite Nancy to come share a few brief remarks with you, given the fact that you'll be hearing more about our Grundy County expansion later today. So, with that, Nancy?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here today. It's a pleasure to be here. I have the opportunity to talk a little bit about our partnership. The GEDC just celebrated 30 years of an organization. We've been doing economic development a long time, and JJC has been with us from the very start. To give you a little bit, many people don't realize, not only have we done curriculum and programs together like the OET and other things, we also, JJC has also been a sponsor of our summer internship program, a program we're very proud of, we've been doing for 12 years of giving students paid internships at businesses all around Grundy County, including JJC. But the other thing that most people don't realize, because it's always under cloak-and-dagger quietness, is when we have new prospects and businesses that are considering coming to Grundy County. Workforce and labor and workforce preparedness and training are always at the top of their list. And so, you, JJC, usually it's Dane, but people from the junior college, you're invited and they participate and are an integral part of the team to attract new business to our community. They sit at those prospect visits, they talk about the training that might be available at the junior college, they talk about the opportunities, the grants for workforce initiatives. And I can't stress enough how important that is to have you all as partners and have the junior colleges partners. Our success is being shared much to the support that we receive from all of you. So, thank you very much. And with that, since it is our 30th year anniversary, I do have an award to present to Dr. Namoo, who is also on our board. Thank you very much for doing that. We have been going around to all of our 30-year investors who have been with us from the very start, presenting and sharing with them and celebrating their 30 years. So, Dr. Namoo, or whoever would like to come forward, or I got it for you here?
Can I bring a friend?
You can bring two.
Item 1.2, recognition of retiree Patricia Heilman?
Can I interject? Point of information. Are any familiar with that? Point of information? When we did communications, it was always whatever was received from the chair or from the secretary, any communications that you did receive. Is there any communications that either of you have received in the past month or so in regards to anything board-related?
No.
If we received no emails from anyone in regards to any board issues, any board concerns?
Just the ones that were generated by you.
I didn't generate any. Okay.
Item 1.3, recognition of retiree Janice, sorry, Karen, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. Karen, if you'd like to speak about Patricia Heilman, please.
Yes, I would like to. Patricia Heilman, affectionately known as Pat, regrettably couldn't join us today. However, we're honored to have her daughter here, Julie Jones, to represent her. Pat's 16-year career at JJC has been marked by her dedication and exceptional service, particularly in the bookstore where she excelled in both Specialist and Customer Service Associate roles. In her role as Specialist, Pat was instrumental in streamlining office procedures and resolving complex discrepancies. Her attention to detail ensured that the bookstore's financial processes, including balancing drawers and accounts, were always in impeccable order. As a Customer Service Associate, Pat's enthusiasm for assisting students and her commitment to the JJC community shone brightly. Her infectious smile, unwavering positivity, love for humor, and deep care for others left an indelible mark on her colleagues, who fondly describe her as having a 24-karat heart of gold. As we bid farewell to Pat, wishing her a joyful and fulfilling retirement, her presence in the bookstore will be deeply missed. Her contributions to JJC and the positive impact she has made to our community will be remembered and cherished.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Julie, for attending today.
Item 1.3, recognition of retiree Janice Schumach Skipper. Mr. Bellades?
Good afternoon. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Janice Schumach Skipper, for over seven years of service to Joliet Junior College, retiring as a tutor in the Tutoring and Learning Center.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just clarify something? When one of us says nay, does that mean they can't retire? Just wondering, you know?
Item 1.4, motion to go into closed session.
So move. Second.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Julie, for attending today.
Item 1.3, recognition of retiree Janice Schumach Skipper. Mr. Bellades?
Good afternoon. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Janice Schumach Skipper, for over seven years of service to Joliet Junior College, retiring as a tutor in the Tutoring and Learning Center.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just clarify something? When one of us says nay, does that mean they can't retire? Just wondering, you know?
Item 1.4, motion to go into closed session.
So move. Second.
What are the reasons of?
Chair requests a local or closed session for discussion under 2C1 personnel, 2C5 potential land acquisition, 2C11 workman's comp case.
Ready for vote?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.5, return to public session. I need a motion.
So move. Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.6, public comments. Karen, do we have any public comments today?
Yes, we do. Chairman, we have Sean Miller here, and he wants to discuss issue 4.1.2. As a little housekeeping, as a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meeting for policy 015501. The purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board on agenda items. Keeping in mind that comments should be in good taste, and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Thank you for following the procedure.
Hello, I'm Sean Miller. I'm a student at JJC, a freshman, and I just wanted to use this to voice support for trustee Ellis's proposal on the flag-raising issue. I saw that crossed out on the agenda. I don't know if that means it's just not going to be tabled or what, but yeah, I yield my time.
Thank you, Sean. Do we have any other further comments?
No, none that I'm aware of.
Item 1.7, a moment of silence. Dr. Namoo?
Chairman Bazinski and members of the board, members of the JJC community, I'm asking that you join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals. Charles Sanders, retired JJC custodian for over 27 years. Ada Naviles, grandson of JJC custodian Ginger Hammond and nephew of Laura Hammond in Building and Services and Facility Services, excuse me. Julie Volpert Agüello, mother-in-law of April Contraño in the enrollment and records and registration area. And Lori Bergman, wife of JJC alum and community philanthropist Jay Bergman.
Thank you, Dr. Namoo. Item 1.8, selected reports. 1.8.1, the DEI report from Dr. Esquortina Irvin?
Thank you, Chairman. If I may tee this up, you know, as a reminder to the board, we have passed a new strategic plan, and the priorities include value diversity, cultivate belonging, craft an intentional student life cycle, strengthen from within, maximize the infrastructure, and grow our possibilities. I want to tee it up and give Dr. Irvin some kudos here for her leadership. As artifacts of our values and priorities are all around us here at the college, this board and this administration have overseen really a historic investment in some of our core values around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are all, as leaders here at the college, committed to creating and maintaining inclusive spaces, and that's something you've heard from me quite a bit. And we are committed to honoring all aspects of our students and our employees' identities so that they feel celebrated here at JJC. And today, you'll learn about how Dr. Irvin and her team are pushing us forward in a number of different ways, all in alignment with the priority that's front and center in our strategic plan to value diversity and cultivate belonging. Please join me in welcoming to the podium, Dr. Esquortina Irvin.
Thank you so much, Dr. Namoo. Chairman Bazinski, trustees of the board, and members of the JJC community, it is always an honor to be before you and share how we continue to have DEI as a core institutional value here at JJC. But before I get started, I have to introduce my team. Now here, could you please stand? And we have Amina, Hector, Monique, Daisy, and our newest addition, Tricia. Tricia will be handling our HSI initiatives, which include seeking our HSI designation and Seal of Excellency. And yes, I am speaking it into existence, and one day I will be up here reporting on it. So, thank you, team, for all that you do. And it's not just the team, it's the college institutional why. We have over 150 employees that help bring forward a lot of the programming that you guys will see me share out today. So, big thank you to the cabinet, thank you to the Board of Trustees, and our employees for holding this as a core value. So, next, we have a timeline here, and I won't go over all of it, but we have to remember to celebrate those incremental successes here at JJC. And we've had many. So much has been done, but there's so much more to do. But what I would like to highlight is that we've had, since I've been here, two institutional strategic plans, and they go for a three-year period. And the last plan, and in the current plan, DEI remains a focus area in the institutional strategic plan, and that's very important. The first strategy is actually valuing diversity and cultivating belonging, and it will focus on five objective areas: increasing enrollment, ensuring ADA compliance, expanding Spanish language and capacity. And that's important because CED came and reported out to us, and they're projecting increase, and we see it with our own eyes in our Hispanic and Latino community, not just in the community, but also in the campus. We're at a historical high for our Hispanic and Latinx enrollment, and that should be celebrated. We also want to close the gap between our students and employee demographics and increase our donor base. So, I've been here in this role going on four years now. The time has went by really fast, and the office has expanded and the role has expanded. The role started here as Executive Director and has been elevated to Chief Equity Officer. And in that role, I serve as a liaison and a member to the VP leadership teams. Will be leading HSI initiatives with Tricia helping us, serving our immigrant and refugee population, and focusing on our small businesses in the community. DEI has been collaborating with EBC, who has been doing an amazing job in the community. They have served over 60 diverse small businesses in the community, and they have just recently completed their third cohort of entrepreneurial business classes. And they continue to partner in the community, both with LADA and ABBA. And JJC has received an award from both LADA and ABBA for our partnership in the community. Just to highlight some of our signature programming, we have our cultural competency workshop, and this training is three hours. That's a long time, but I'm proud to say our pre- and post-assessment data is very strong from our employees, showing the impact of this training. We've trained over, we provided the workshop to over 1,200 employees. Our next one's in the spring, and we currently have 75 employees that have registered. Our book club is celebrating three years, and over the three years, we've had over 400 JJC employees, either new or returning, read books on diverse topics, having those courageous conversations. And over the summer and fall, we had 150, and we've read seven books as a campus. We have our peace circles. This fall, we've had five peace circles, and they're both for employees and students focusing on life transitions, stress relief, and just global issues in our community. Our employee resource groups are holding strong, celebrating two years. We have four: Black Employees, Community Service, Latinx, and our LGBTQ community groups. We have had some significant milestones, celebrating our students and their diversity. We had the refresh of the concourse flags. So, down the sea concourse are all of our country flags. They were all refreshed, they're all brand-new. And we had a celebration where our students were able to march down the hallways, very proud of where they're from and displaying their country flags. We celebrated our prayer room and our first all-gender multi-stall restroom. We celebrated Native American heritage month and just reflected on the ground that we're on and the place that we love so dearly, and reflecting back on our Native American culture and how they were so strong and so resilient. And we were also celebrating in the harrow for the work that we're doing in this area. DEI is also out in the community. There's two pictures up there of the Boys and Girls Club, where we were there celebrating afternoon of service. We were painting, and we successfully did not get paint everywhere, so we were very proud of that. And we celebrated Chantel's, at her open house, as being a new director at the Boys and Girls Club. And we were also celebrating with EBC and the Joliet Center Partnership at a ribbon-cutting downtown for Richardson's. Focus area, as we continue to move and plan forward, some of the focus areas where we will have is to focus on equitable graduations and time for completion, especially for our Hispanic and Latinx students. We are retaining our Hispanic and Latinx students very, very well. In fact, this last reporting period, they are out retaining any demographic, any other demographic on campus. But, the graduation wrote, rates are not as competitive, so we need to work on that. That's an opportunity for us. We also are going to work on our HSI designation, and we're going to be working in the community and with EBC to help support our small businesses in the community. And a big focus will be on implementation of the institutional strategic plan. And that's my update. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Trustee Morales?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Trustee Broderick?
No, thank you.
Trustee Lee?
No, thank you.
Trustee Harris?
No questions. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing out there in the community. The business community certainly appreciates the information, especially when you guys are out there and making the benefit from it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
I do have a comment. Thank you so much for the wonderful information that you presented. This provides a reminder that DEI is not just a particular department, there's different things that are implemented throughout the college, and different things that each department is doing in order to make sure that we are fulfilling our mission and our strategic plan. So, thank you for that wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mahalik?
Thank you for the report. I want to see those graduation rates go way up.
Me too. And they will. They will.
And trustee Ellis?
No, thank you for your report.
You're welcome. And I want to thank leadership for your support, because that's an important partnership to have in order for us to do any of this. So, thank leadership and thank the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Item 1.8.2, Grundy Expansion Update, Part Two.
Chairman, thank you. I'll be doing this while I walk up to the podium. Can we give Dr. Irvin a round of applause for that? Amazing presentation. Thank you. And as the presentation is coming up on the screen here, I want to just acknowledge the incredible effort of, of course, the team, who I'll introduce in a little bit, are members of the exploratory committee. Unfortunately, Dr. Farmer couldn't be here today. She's a little under the weather. She's on the mend, getting better, and I'll do my best to represent her well. I had been tempted to do some of Dr. Farmer's mannerisms and idiosyncrasies, but then I remembered that this is recorded, and the VPs will play those back, and it'll come back to me. Nonetheless, so the objective here today in Part Two of this presentation is, you know, to formally, and this is going to be a bit sad, but to formally bring the exploratory committee's work to an end. And I trust full well that all members of the committee will continue to stay connected as we turn all of this vision into a reality. So, with that said, I'd like to ask members of the exploratory committee, both internal and our partners in the community, if you're able to do so, please rise and be recognized. And I would just, want to just send a huge thanks and a round of applause, both internal and external. Members of the Grundy, please be seated, and thank you for being with us today. You heard from a few of them when we kicked this off a few months ago. You heard from Dr. Farmer last month. You'll hear from a few of them here again. As we, you know, kind of kick this off, we do have some things to reveal today, but here, as a reminder to the board and the college community, are members of the exploratory committee from Mayor Brown, Julie Wilkinson, and all of them in between, prominent members of the Grundy community, both in the public and private sector, working together with members of our team, leaders at JJC, to ensure that whatever we end up doing in Grundy County honors the interests of those who make the economy go, make the hospital run, make city government run, are in charge of economic development in Grundy County, all of those different things, that we're honoring your interests and that your vision, or rather your interests, inform the vision of what will be here at JJC in Grundy County. So, as a reminder to the board, our entire district, spanning seven counties, most of Will, most of Grundy. And I'd like to start by offering four members of the committee time to make remarks. Now, we've allocated an hour to Julie Wilkinson, kidding, an hour to Erin Hayden, an hour to Nancy Norton, and 30 seconds to our good friend Lance Copes. I'm kidding, but I am going to invite Erin Hayden up here from Procter &amp; Gamble, because she has another obligation. Erin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Namoo and the entire committee. So, I wanted to express the gratitude that Procter &amp; Gamble has for not only JJC as a critical partner for our success in the community, but also the entire expansion committee for welcoming the business perspective that Procter &amp; Gamble brings to the community and to the committee for this expansion work. We chose the location in Grundy County for a lot of reasons. The number one was the people of Grundy County and the community that we're serving by bringing high-paying jobs to the community. And we're very excited to continue this partnership, to bring better educational opportunities so that we are hiring local and keeping the tax dollars and investment local. So, thank you.
Lance Copes, Executive Director of GVAC.
Then I'll be brief. I break thanks from the four high schools that serve Grundy Area Vocational Center for the opportunity to be part of this committee and to continue to work on the wonderful relationship we've had with JJC. One of the remarks I wanted to make was, the committee did a great job of surveying all of Grundy County, not focusing on just one location. We spent time in Diamond, we spent time in Coal City, we spent time in the whole Morris area. The village administrations and city administrations were fantastic people for the committee to work with. They brought desirable locations, opportunities for, well, with best-meet students in this region's opportunities in Grundy County. Focusing on Morris at the end for ourselves was something where the group has really worked in a great conversation, partnerships throughout all. Wonderful, wonderful committee to work with, and really appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Nancy, can we bring you up next? All right.
Hello again, everyone. Thank you for having us today. I also want to stop and give a big thanks to the leadership of this group, to Dr. Farmer. I know she can't be here. Dr. Farmer, thank you also for your input. And Julie Wilkinson from the City of Morris, they really were the team that spearheaded this. Sometimes when I come to Will County, they say, "Oh, yeah, Grundy County is way out there, right?" I mean, I get that with the, down the road, but I think it's important, and I know that you all recognize that, and that's how this initiative started, that Grundy County is now third out of 102 counties in growth, population growth at about 7.3%. Grundy County, our job growth has grown 9.4% in the last five years. That's compared to the national average at 3.4%. Exciting things are happening, and we are so appreciative that you recognize that and your important role in training the workforce of tomorrow and the residents of tomorrow. your important role in training the workforce of tomorrow and the residents of tomorrow. I think the part that was most pleasing to me about this project was the cross-section of representation that was on this committee. And Dr. Namuwa talked about that a little bit, but from education to healthcare to energy to all of our logistics. The Chamber of Commerce, Christina is here as well. Everyone had, was together, and as you can imagine, when you get this group together, we had some robust and lively discussions. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide input for what I think is going to be a very successful and important expansion into Grundy. Thank you.
Julie Wilkinson from the City of Morris.
Thank you, Dr. Namuwa. And again, express our thanks to Dr. Farmer, Dr. Gray, the team from JJC, who have been wonderful guides along this journey. I'm Julie Wilkinson, the Business Development Director for the City of Morris, and I bring greetings today on behalf of Mayor Chris Brown, who has been a champion of this initiative from its early stages. The concept of JJC's expansion in Grundy County has been a long time in the making. Through a commitment from the college leadership and a willingness to partner, research, converse, and plan by the stakeholders in the expansion committee, the effort has reached the milestone before you today. I want to thank my colleagues on the committee for their time, talent, and commitment that they've invested. These individuals are attuned to the workforce needs and growth opportunities in Grundy County, and the City of Morris is proud to be at the table with them. By touring the Grundy County's more populous communities, as Lance mentioned, we did this both virtually, looking at maps, and then we also did it via a school bus and a city bus. We affirmed the unique strengths and challenges of each location. We considered expected development, infrastructure improvements, and the travel patterns of current Grundy County JJC students. We also factored in anecdotal evidence through our respective industries. And as a result of this body of work, I'm pleased to share that we recommend Morris as the site of the expanded Grundy County presence for Joliet Junior College. Our lively Mayor Brown equipped recently on an episode of our new More to Morris podcast that Morris is the center of the universe. And while that is an overstatement, the sentiment is that Morris is a great place to be. The leaders on the expansion committee are certainly driving the success of Morris through their industries. Our quality of life has increased through an expansion of major special events, now totaling 55 throughout the year that the City of Morris is a partner with. These drive economic growth, exposure, local tourism, and they've spurred a record number of new or transferred business licenses while holding a low vacancy rate in our thriving downtown. Sales tax surpassed a new record of $10 million in the audit approved by the city council earlier this month, allowing the city to again reduce its tax levy and the financial burden on residents. Our state-of-the-art facilities like Proctor and Gamble fuel job and wage growth. Those are reinforced by Costco's expansion to double their production. The Morris you see today will only get better, and we know that JJC belongs there in an expanded presence. To the east, at the Brisbane Road Interchange, GE is building a 1.2 million square foot facility to employ 200 people. It will serve as a proverbial domino for advanced manufacturing on the surrounding acreage, and we know that JJC will prepare that workforce. Route 6 West is slated to become four lanes on IDOT's multi-year plan, and a new 60,000 square foot YMCA will open its doors in 2025 in partnership with our first-class Morris Hospital. This will anchor residential growth on the west side of our community. An enhanced JJC presence in Morris will serve Grundy County residents and its neighboring communities well, building resiliency and opportunity even in the changing economic times ahead. On behalf of Mayor Brown and the City of Morris, I want to thank you for this opportunity. We welcome you, and we remain your committed partner as the journey continues. Thank you.
I can certainly see Mayor Brown wearing a shirt that says, "Morris, Illinois, the center of the universe." Again, want to extend congrats and thanks to the group. And as we expand into the City of Morris, you'll stay closely connected to this. A few more details. I want to acknowledge Dr. Gray and her leadership and the academic leaders of our institution. In parallel to what we're doing in terms of land acquisition and site selection, we are also working collaboratively with Dr. Gray's team and our faculty to ensure that not only are we honoring the interests of the industries and our academic partners, education partners in Grundy, that we're doing so with our faculty and our faculty leaders in mind. Now, some of the programs that have emerged, bubbled up to the top of the list include what you see here. And mind you, these are not final programs. Conversations are ongoing, and we hope that whatever we choose to do, decide to do, and updoing in Grundy County will indeed be part of a shared vision and shared suite of offerings. But you'll see here, there have been some interest raised in aviation and public works, in energy and healthcare, and construction. Many of the programs that Lance's operation focuses on, fire science and welding is something we heard about a lot, especially from our advanced manufacturing partners, auto and soft skills as well. So, as we continue to develop and finalize these mix of programs, know that the interests shared from the exploratory committee, coupled with the interests of our academic leaders, will result in our final list of offerings and offerings that will serve the communities in and around Grundy County. So, you might be asking yourselves, "What's next?" We're currently pursuing a number of different sites in Morris, and as we make progress in terms of site selection and land acquisition, we will bring that back to our board and back to the JJC community. I want to highlight the final bullet here. As we progress and as that vision becomes clearer and clearer, we're going to rely on some of our executive leaders to take this plan down to Springfield, to Washington, DC, to seek support for all of this vision. And so, I have great confidence in our leaders. I have great confidence in this Board of Trustees to do just that. And as a reminder to the college community, JJC has been very successful when it's partnered with industry, collaborated with all of our partners to make a strong case to expand its footprint, whether it be in Romeoville or in downtown Joliet. Now, this next slide, and this is a dangerous slide to show. So, you'll note in this room, 1, 2, and I believe 3, and I'm going to ask staff to slowly reveal these with one caveat, okay? The asterisk is for a reason. When you're involved in these projects, and most recently I was involved in an eight, not quite yet, not yet, not yet, oh, shoo, that was close. Sorry about that, Karen. That was my fault. That was my fault. That was my fault. So, when you're involved in these projects, and most recently I've been involved in an eight-figure project to build a science facility, brand-new science facility. The thing that drives every single construction project, and many of our trustees know this having been involved in construction projects, as have our leaders, the educational specifications drive the design of the building, the instructional spaces, and the spaces that our students will occupy both in and outside of the classroom, whether it's, you know, experiencing many of our support services that our Student Development Office does, all the things that you heard from Dr. Irvin. All of those things are driven by the educational specifications, document, and process. Hence, the asterisk. So, what we're about to show you is something. It is not the final thing. It's designed so that Mayor Brown and I can go down to Springfield and have something to share. It's designed so our trustees can come with us and have something to share to our elected officials. So, do I have everyone's agreement that the asterisk means something? Okay, trustees, are you with me on this? Asterisk means something? Okay. All right. I don't see any cameras out taking pictures, so I think we're safe. So, I'm going to show you three images. None of them are of instructional spaces, but they're designed to give you just a sense of what our increased footprint might look like in the City of Morris and Grundy County. The first is just a front-facing view of what could be our new space. I just want you to sit with it for a little bit. The next is an overview of all the parking space that we're seeing. I will offer, and I've considered, you know, over the course of our involvement, our presence in Grundy County and in the City of Morris, I'm wondering if it would come as any surprise to the trustees or member of the audience that we have served over 1,000 students annually in Morris. We're nowhere near that now. We will get there once again. Hence, all the parking spots. And this is an artist's rendition essentially of what it might feel like, look like, for a student to walk into the new Morris Education Center. Oh, you may now reveal the actual poster boards. As we move forward with this project, Dr. Farmer has asked me to send some specific thanks to Josh West and Ken Santiago, who really took us through some courageous conversations, as she would say, in terms of academic program offerings. So, Josh and Ken, thank you very much. And last, of course, but certainly not least, Dr. Farmer has really led this effort. It pains her not to be here today, but she will be back. And as we move forward with programs, with site selection, all the things related to our expansion into Grundy County, we will absolutely bring those updates back to the board. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions our trustees might have.
Trustee Garcia again.
Another question, but a comment. Thank you so much for doing this presentation and sharing a high level of what could potentially look like our new space. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia.
Trustee Mahalik.
No questions. Thanks for all the work, everyone. Appreciate it.
Trustee Ellis.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Morelos.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Namuwa, for your leadership and for your visionary. I appreciate that very much. This college is so lucky to have you here and for working with all of our elected officials and everybody that's worked on this team. Morris is definitely, I want to move to Morris now, actually. No, thank you. This is wonderful. Thank you.
It's working, Julie.
Trustee Broderick.
I also want to thank you, and I also want to say, I like the thought that you have and it's visionary, that we did have 1,000 and you're going to gain it back again because that shows that there is a definite prominent force behind you in doing this. And with the committee, I'm sure the committee sees the drawing attention of us coming to Morris and expanding in that area because, yes, we've been in Will County, but Grundy is the going thing, and it's definitely prominent. And I think all of you working together, all of us, internal and external, have done a great job.
Thank you. Trustee Broderick.
Trustee Lee.
No, no questions, but thank you so much for everyone and all your hard work.
Trustee Harris.
Yeah. Ditto everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Can we go back to the slide that shows future focus?
Yes, sir.
That one right there. And I guess this question will be for Julie Wilkinson. Is this a publication for the Village?
Yes.
Good. So, since it's nowhere near pre-press for future editions, can we ensure that JJC's new campus shows up on the front page of this?
Good job, Jerry.
I'm sorry, Kelly's probably already asked this question and got it penciled in. And if that's possible, I apologize to Erin, who has another year before we're ready to get her picture up there, too, so.
My question, do we just this publication or?
Well, I want it on as many as possible, but I like this one. I like the face of this book right here, and if it is available, we'd love to see us on there, so.
You're on there.
All righty. Is that all you wanted me to ask, Kelly? Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And our members of our exploratory committee have taken time out of their day to be with us. I would invite them to stay or take off, but again, thank them for spending some part of their day with us here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.8.3, the Faculty Union Report. And as we're getting ready for Christmas, attending all our staff functions and family function and everything, we have to remember the students have all been at home studying for finals week this week. So, the festivities begin for them after the finals are over, so therefore, Dr. Marsink and our adjunct faculty report from Laurel Deeskow will not be done this meeting. Item 1.8.5, Building and Grounds Committee Report.
So, our G Building Restrooms remodel project is done, and it came in within budget. The sub D sump pit for groundwater is done. The contractor has completed the punch list. The CNA lab at Romeoville is also completed, and the Environmental Health and Safety Office remodel is completed. All of the projects came in under budget.
Say that, sir. Perfect. Item 1.8.6, Board Policy Committee Report.
Okay, so we only, don't have very many policies this month. 01.45.05 Electronic Attendance at Meeting Rules outlines the rules for attending meetings via electronic means. 12.06.00 changed from driver's license to driver's privileges, and language was added to define college business. As the flag policy was tabled, we will have to vote on that. So, that was last month. And I just do want to call the board's attention to the fact that we have not yet found a replacement for the full-time position of compliance officer. Tracy Morris had a full-time position as compliance officer dedicated to policy procedure and OMA rules and regulations. Upon her departure, I asked President Namuwa about her replacement, and he explained that he put the position up and did not find an adequate replacement. Karen Kissel was gracious enough to step up and take on the extra role of compliance officer. However, I think it's important not to overburden our current CFO, who has the important role of maintaining our fiscal responsibility. I believe that the absence of a full-time compliance officer may put us in jeopardy of being in violation of compliance with policy procedures and OMA rules and regulations. And in order for JJC to meet the needs, requirements, and dedication that it takes to stay in compliance with policy procedures and OMA rules and regulations, compliance officer deserves a full-time attention and dedication. Therefore, it is my recommendation that it is in the best interest of the college and community to search for and hire a certified compliance and ethics professional dedicated specifically to the compliance officer position. I respectfully ask the board to support my recommendation of moving forward with the hiring of a full-time compliance officer in order to ensure compliance with policies, procedures, and OMA rules and regulations.
Thank you.
Item 1.8.7, the Finance Committee Report.
Well, short one. We didn't have a meeting this month, so. Awesome.
Item 1.8.8, the President's Report. Dr. Namuwa.
Chairman, thank you. Just a few items. And Trustee Lee? Absolutely. Absolutely. It's an interesting labor market right now, but we will not stop until we have a qualified person on board. So, thank you for that challenge. You know, it's, again, as we approach the end of the year, it's hard to believe the end of the year is upon us. Nevertheless, here it is. So, I come to you again to celebrate some of the many things we're doing. If you didn't have a chance to hear me on WJOL and Missy Gillis on WJOL, I think we did a great job kind of celebrating, you know, the support that this board has offered around that vision in addition to the foundation board. around that vision, in addition to the foundation board as well. And so I would encourage you to go back and kind of listen to that. I want to share with the board, I've been selected to serve a two-year term on the Association of Community College Trustees as Advisory Committee of Presidents, and that's an exclusive group of only 20 presidents across the country. And so we, as a group of 20, will work with the president and CEO, Ji-Hang Lee, with ACCT, and continue to improve all things that we all care about, both as trustees and as presidents, and to help elevate our profile nationally as well. You know, I mentioned Dr. Farmer earlier. We're wishing her well. I did volunteer both her and KRT to write a book chapter with me over the break, and the book chapter is really about how we do all of these cool things that our trustees have seen. So the book is about design thinking and how JJC uses design thinking to do big things, and there's more coming. So I want to send a special shout-out to KRT and Dr. Farmer for, I guess, agreeing, I'm not sure if they had a choice, to serve as co-authors with me on the chapter we'll write over the break in an upcoming book highlighting some of the most strategically successful community colleges in America. So some of you perhaps saw this, but I'm sorry, I will just say that I've never seen Kristi Malvi so excited in my whole life. And that's the first image you'll see. They've been taken with my artificial intelligence glasses. I'm not going to reveal too much because we'll do a big reveal at spring convocation. But if you're one of my three Instagram followers, then you've seen a montage that I put together that records the things I do, just some of the things I do. And I didn't know Kristi Malvi could jump so high, but she can, and I'll share more Chief, there you are, made an appearance. I'll tell you why Kristi Malvi jumped so high. So first of all, it's not common that chairman of the board be invited to cabinet retreat. Every fall, we have a cabinet retreat at my house in Frankfurt. We decided to invite Chairman Budzinski. I don't know if it was a great idea or not, but he was witness to a lot of really fun things, the learning, the fun, the shenanigans. And the reason Kristi Malvi jumped so high is I took the cabinet through an exercise, challenged them, I gave three teams $20, and challenged them to make as much money in one hour with that $20 bill as possible, two rules. Number one, the laws of the United States of America, the state of Illinois, Will County, and the city of Frank, the village of Frankfurt, and also recognizing that they are representatives of JJC. So where the laws don't apply, if there's a gray area, always remember that your executive leaders and the chairman of the board of Joliet Junior College, and they all complied. You know, we are so proud to report that in one hour, under Kristi's leadership, I mean, turned $20 into $4,700 in support of Foster Palooza last week. I mean, it is just an amazing, incredible thing, and I know every single person in this room got a text message or an email when it was happening, this Foster Palooza blitz, and for those of you who contributed, you changed the lives. You affected hundreds of lives at Foster Palooza, each and every one of you. So I want to celebrate cabinet for participating the way they did. And Chairman, I think if we can turn $20 into $4,700 every hour, we could be a billion-dollar organization by FY '25.
Think how much money we're losing with this sitting here.
That's right. I know. Okay, got it, got it. Understood, understood. Kristi's team with the holiday pop-up walk, Santa and Friends, really great event, and you'll see trustee Mahalik, Serena and the boys making appearance there as well. Speaking of raising money, Kristi and her team yet again annually, President's Holiday Celebration and Basket Extravaganza. We had 34 baskets this year. Last year, we demolished the previous record of $6,000 raised. Last year, we raised $8,100. This year, we raised a new record, $8,300 for the Namou family scholarship for first-generation students. I want to thank the college community and those that contributed to this incredible event and activity. Thank you. And as Chairman referenced, it is finals week. We had a really cool PB&amp;J and therapy dogs event, and apparently I've been making peanut butter and jellies wrong my whole life because Pat Van Dyne was able to fill a whole tray in about six minutes, so I'll be taking tips and tricks from Pat Van Dyne after this. And lastly, of course, as we conclude the calendar year, happy holidays to you all. I wish you all the very best, and the board, thank you for your service to our community, our students, and all of Joliet Junior College. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.9, 1.9.1, the Approval of Minutes for the Regular Meeting Held on November 15, 2023.
A move.
Second.
I do have some corrections. Under 2.5.2, I had asked to see a report of the dollar amount, so I don't see that it was identified, so it said I did ask for it. I thought that it was said that Dr. Gray would get that for me. I don't see that in that. Item 4.1, under First Reading and Buried Policies, typo error, my name is with an E, not just Broderick, it's Broderick. And then in the trustee update, I did mention again about the agenda item, and Chairman Budzinski did make comments, too. I don't know if you want to add those or not, but there were comments about why I thought we should get the agenda prior to it being finalized, and I don't see it in that portion. I see that you mentioned in where Michelle responded, but that was all under trustee updates.
I believe we all got the agenda this month before it was finalized.
Yep. I didn't see it before it was finalized.
When did you receive your board book?
On Wednesday.
Then it wasn't finalized at that point.
Okay, well, I was not aware that it wasn't finalized at that time. It looked like it was in the board book as finalized.
And that's why we have a green-cheated, updated version that's been corrected for this meeting today.
Well, that would be good, then, if we're going to get something like that, it'd be noted, because prior to, we always just got the agenda emailed to us so that we could look at it, and it wasn't with the board book we saw the agenda prior to. And if that be the case, then I do ask that we do get the green sheet then identified to us prior 48 hours prior to the meeting, so we can see it and know what's been changed and formalized. But I'm just adding what my concerns were here in the minutes.
Could you roll call?
Roll call, please.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes, and thank you for your, the notes that you take, Karen. I think they're just fine. Thank you.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10, Approval of the Agenda.
Some move. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item 1.11, Approval of Consent Agenda as Presented.
Some move.
I would like to pull two items.
You need a second.
Second.
Second. And I do have some items to pull, too.
Okay.
Okay.
2.1.1, 4.2.3, and 4.2.5, and 4.3.
Take the roll.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Hold items, 2.1.1, Recommending Appointment of Chief Human Resource Officer. Trustee Broderick?
Do you need a motion first?
Motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second to discuss.
Motion. Did you move?
There's no motion yet.
Chairman, one second. I think, have we moved into the consent agenda?
We approved the consent agenda with 2.1.1 poll.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Apologies.
So now we need a motion, a second.
Got it.
I motion.
There's no second, though.
Do we have a second for the motion for 2.1.1?
Since there's no second, motion fails.
Item 4.
Absent is second, that means it will not be approved. It was polled from the consent agenda, so that item has not been addressed. So you need to address it one way or another, whether.
Second.
We have a second.
Yes.
Now we're available for discussion.
Correct. My concern is, I have discussed it with the board, and my concern is, I think that we should have gone outside. I think that the indications that I have shared with the board would highly recommend an outside officer for this position, and I leave it at that.
Is there any other discussion? No?
So we have a motion to approve the chief human resource officer. Karen, can you take the roll?
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Item 4.2.3, Trustee Development. Need a motion?
First.
Do you believe this was polled by trustee Broderick?
Correct. Hold on one second. Let me get to the page.
Question?
Okay. 4.2.3. All right, when I was looking at this one on 4.2.3, I looked at what I had asked for in regards to a review on the second page of the board committee and their purposes. I thought there was going to be addition that the chair would also be responsible in reviewing that with the board trustee. When I looked at the way this was presented last time and this time, there was no changes at all, so I'm asking and concerned about that. And also, it says in here that you require training. I want to make sure that we do some posting of the training to show that those trustees, because I don't see it on our board website, that we are inclusive to make sure that all board members have met their training, because it was supposed to be the first, third, and fifth year, and I know that we had training this past June, and I know that we had a trustee that didn't attend, it's in her first year, and I think that we need to make sure that all trustees are compliant, so that we don't fall into any non-compliance.
We do have somebody that monitors that for us.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, the website really wouldn't make a difference if we posted it or not. We have somebody that monitors, makes sure we fulfill our training requirement.
So all trustees have been complied?
I have not been informed that anyone has not completed the required training.
And just to be clear, your first, so your first question was regarding that you would have liked.
The addition.
You would have liked an addition added to the policy, Garcia-Guian, and I talked about it with the policy committee, and we decided that that does not need to be added to the policy. It's fine as the way that it is. And as far as, as far as that, I think we need to stick to what we polled and discussed, and it sounds like that's a request for you to maybe have from Dr. Namou to play something on the website, but that doesn't have to do with the policy as far as the second comment. And Chair Budzinski already addressed that as well.
All right, so then we can be assured that there's going to be some way of us noting that there is compliance with trustee development somewhere?
The chair, the chair is the one that presides over the board and that would receive that information, and my understanding from whoever is responsible on the college end with, I know Karen, do you keep up, who is responsible for keeping up that we keep track of our training?
There's somebody else on staff that monitors.
It's somebody else on staff? Okay.
Yes, not only our training, but also our financial request that we have to file with Will County every year. There's somebody that monitors that for us and reports to the state.
I would just assume if you have a question on if somebody completed their training, you refer that to Budzinski.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
4.2.5 was also.
We have to vote on 4.2.3. We have a motion to approve it in a second.
We do.
So we need a vote.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 4.2.5, Agenda Preparation.
Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Okay. Once again, I am going to reiterate what I did before. I think we need to put in their verbiage that there needs to be an attorney review prior to the agenda going out to us to make sure that there is no need to have any corrections. I think Brian, our attorney, needs to review, because I think that in seeing things that were removed, that were verbiage added in regard to the motions of things that were made, I think the attorney needs to do a prior review, and any amendments to the agendas must be done at least 48 hours prior to the meeting and the board in receipt, not at the table. So that needs to be added into this.
Brian, is that proper procedures at other colleges, too, and do it like that, or how have you seen this? It's on a case-by-case basis. I mean, there's, as long as it's posted 48 hours in advance, you're in compliance with the law, I don't know, you know. I've looked over the form before. I don't see an issue with it. You have to provide for public comment. If you're going to go into closed session, you need to have that on your agenda. But otherwise, I don't know if there's a requirement that I review for anything that's legal or illegal, as long as you're sticking to that form. The agenda could be amended after the 48 hours to maybe have discussion, but not necessarily action on an item.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, it does. And at this point, our chairperson and Dr. Namou are already reviewing the agenda. So this is something that we have already made sure that it does not violate anything that could potentially get us in trouble. So I thank you for your comment, but I do not see a need to make any necessary modifications in order to approve it.
So may I ask this question and point of information? When was this one changed with the items that were removed and then readdressed as on the regular agenda?
So we get the board book, I get it the same day you do.
Right.
And items were presented that were listed as consent agenda items. They had been tabled, which means there is a different procedure we have to follow to take them from the table. So that is where the changes in the agenda came from, is just putting it into proper procedure. There really wasn't a change. There really wasn't a change to anything other than just how they're listed on there. They could not be considered first read, they could not be considered at all, having been put on the table. What you see on your agenda today is a matter of pulling the three items from the table. When we table an item, we have to pull it back at the next meeting.
I understand.
Or within the quarter, or it dies. So that is why it's back on there, that it has to be pulled from the table first.
I understand.
That's why the agenda changes were made.
I believe the changes were made on Friday.
On Friday?
I believe so.
Because that's why it would have been nice to have seen this, because I too understood and knew about the tabled items. That's why I had a concern. So that's why, Brian, I would think that it would be good for us to see it 48 hours prior to, not at the table.
And it is posted.
But how do we know that it's been changed? If we get the book, how do we know it's been changed? Communication is the best thing for us to know about something.
And any other questions on this policy, or we can take it to a vote?
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is item 4.2.8, Consultant Services.
This goes back to.
We need a motion.
Motion first.
In a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This just goes back to me missing that one meeting, I am so sorry, horribly sorry. I didn't notice that there was an institutional procedure added to this policy. I'd like to read it before I pass it, so I'm going to request that we send that back to committee, just so I can look it over thoroughly. And then the, kind of the same thing with the sale and disposition of college property. Oh, we need to.
So we would stay with 4.2.8. So we have a motion to approve it. You want to ask somebody to amend their motion to.
Send it back to the committee.
Send it back to First Committee, who made the motion?
For that and 4.2.10, I think she's saying two as well, right?
Right.
You want both those pulled and sent back?
Well, they're already polled, I.
I know, but we got, you want to send them back?
To committee.
Yeah, 4.2.8, she's asking you if you'll consider a motion to, or amend your motion to send it back to the Policy Committee.
And that was the one that made the motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, second amended. Motion amended to bring it back to committee, and then we can go ahead and present it again.
We need confirmation with trustee Harris that she agrees with that, because she seconded the motion.
I agree.
Okay. So the motion is to send the policy back to the committee?
Mm-hmm.
For review. Okay. Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
And item 4.2.10, Sale and Disposal of College Property.
Same thing.
You make a motion?
Need a motion in a second.
Motion to send it.
Motion to send it back to committee.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So it's just the same thing. I want to take a little bit of a closer look at that one. There was something that I didn't notice that I would just like to talk about further with committee. I mean, I can, you know what, honestly, with this one, let's just get your opinion, Board. So this policy, if you want to turn to it, has changed. And it used to be that the sale and disposal of college property was approved by the Board of Trustees, and they changed that to the Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. I, if you want to give me your opinion, because we're kind of divided on that and policy. Garcia-Gean agreed with it going through the way that it is. I like the way that it was. So I don't know if any of you have any comments on whether or not you would like the sale and disposal of college property to come across the Board, or whether or not you're okay with it going to the Director of Business and Auxiliary Services, so that we can kind of close this.
Is this mostly like for furniture, things like that?
Furniture and pieces of equipment. What I've known for the B&amp;G Committee is that they have, everything has a useful life. And so what they do is that they, that they determine the useful life is over, they take it back to a secondary market and they sell those items. And then they invest in new furniture and equipment with that, those proceeds as well, so.
Can they just let, can they just let us know, maybe we want to buy some of it?
Right.
I have an office, that's why.
So I just, that's a great question for Building and Grounds, actually, then, to kind of just run this policy by you. So how do you feel about this? Are you okay with the Business and Auxiliary Services, the Senior Director making that decision on those things? Or would you, do you think it's okay to bring it across the Board and let us know about it?
Well, I don't think they're taking the money and putting it in their pocket that they're asking. It is going for reinvestment in the new furniture as well. Maybe Matt can jump up here and just explain it a little more to the Board, so we're a little more clear. Sorry, Matt, to throw you in the fire, but I'm okay with the current policies and procedures, because I think it's.
We do also, we do also provide.
He does bring it by me when I'm on the B&amp;G Committee, so we kind of.
The only thing is, is that, you know, with trustees, we're elected, so you never know if it's always going to be you that's in that position. And while you're really good in Building and Grounds and know what you're doing and know what questions to ask, that may not always be the case. And so the, you know, I'm just a little bit leery to change it, because let's just say that you're not there in the Building and Grounds Committee. I just don't have a problem with it coming across to the whole Board to let us know, or at least it being in our Board book. So with this change, it would never basically even, we wouldn't know about it.
I also think in some of this, we would not be aware of the actual value of it. And then we're, we don't have a warehouse to hold it, why, we learn and make decisions. I think we should, now, as long as we understand what college property means in this context. If we redefine that and make sure that it's spelled out in the policy what's considered college property versus 20 acres woods, you know, as long as we know, I mean, we can entrust them with getting rid of old office furniture. And we don't need to spend time trying to value that and.
May I say something? My grandfather used to think someone's trash was gold, so he used to grab it and store it in our warehouse. And my dad said, what's all this junk in my warehouse? And my grandfather says, we can resell that. And you can't resell that, you're then pennies on the dollar. So it's, I think, I think it is critical, but I mean, Matt, do you want to explain the procedure just a little bit more, just so we can clarify?
One second.
Yeah, so, so first of all, when we're talking about the items that we are talking about, we're talking about things that have reached the end of their useful life. So we're talking about chairs that typically don't work, if they do, they're pretty worn out. What we do is we put those on an auction site called GovDeals. So if you're looking to buy anything, you can sign up for an account on GovDeals, go in and bid, just like everyone else. And you'll find that that's used with a lot of government agencies across the United States, actually. But what you are, again, what you're talking about is things that have reached the end of their useful life. If we think we can get something out of it, we'll put it on GovDeals. If we don't think we can get something out of it, we will put it in a recycling of some sort. The other goal that's not really listed in there, and don't want to stray off topic, is to keep it out of landfills and things like that. So trying to find another use for it. We're not talking about 20 acres of woods, that's a good point. So we're talking about things that just really have no useful life to us. We do offer it to other schools in our district. Since I've been here, and from what I understand from the, from my staff, no one ever takes it, because if it's not useful to us, it's not really going to be useful to anyone else either, so.
Thank you.
Does that help?
No, that definitely does help. And I think that, you know, maybe that is just the little bit that it needs, is to define what college property is, and that it's not 20 acres of land in this, and then that would clear this up, and it'd be confined.
Right. And that it's not laptops or computers, because we had a problem when we identified the Renaissance Center. We lost property there, and we didn't know about losing certain things that were, that were sold.
Okay. I can't speak to that particular instance.
I know, I know, this was before.
But computers and laptops are included in that, but those are wiped of all of their, the memory and everything, and certified before we get rid of them, so they don't. And usually, we sell those by the pallet full, and so you don't really know who's buying it, but we really don't, we don't worry about that, because there's no data on there for anybody to be concerned about. Usually, people buy it for the precious metals and then sell them and, you know, do it that way.
Well, yeah, but I think the definition of properties is what we need.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion to send it back to the committee, which we will do, and we would like a clearer definition on what constitutes property.
Thank you.
And I think we'll end discussion, thank you, Matt. We're ready to vote on this item.
Yes. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Item 4.3, Approval of Board of Trustee Meeting Dates and Times for Calendar Year 2024.
Need a motion? So moved. Second.
My concern comes on the retreat dates. I know that we have them up here, but most of the time that we've had retreats, we always send out two dates at work, so that it is possible, because these are so far in the future, the July one, and the March one is coming up. I think looking at retreat times from 12 to 5, I want to make sure that we give options of whether it be for that date or another date. So I'm just asking that those two timeframes, I'm okay with the workshop, it's the two retreat dates that I think we need to look at, to give us more opportunities.
I think we get these opportunities as the date is approaching, if it's going to work well with us, and we've always adjusted. So the calendar looks fine, because we are given the opportunity to change that as we get closer to the date.
Yeah, I can't schedule six months and pick one of two days. I have to put it on my calendar for travel and everything else, so I don't want a possibly this date or that date for me. I would rather a secure date and plan around it, getting closer.
Well, then can we identify these as tentative, on this, as tentative? And that it, a month before, that we come back and revisit it before the month of, so on 2/27, we'd look at the retreat and say, is this doable? Because there's been many times when, all of a sudden, a retreat was scheduled, and then all of a sudden it was changed. And it was changed 48 hours before.
Well, the last one that we changed is because only three people out of seven were going to show up. We wouldn't have had a quorum, we really wouldn't have been able to benefit from the person we were bringing in either.
And I believe those were emergency kind of situations for all of the trustees who weren't able to come. We did commit to that date, we wanted to be able to make it, and for whatever reason, all of us had something come up that day, to where there wouldn't even have been a quorum to hold the meeting.
I think we kind of, it's understood they're tentative, it doesn't have to be in print, we already know that, because we've done it where we've had to change before.
I kind of like this way too, because it goes right on my calendar.
No. I'm just bringing it up, because we've always been with tentative of, you know, when we look at the date, we look at what works best for all.
I don't know, who decides 12 PM on, in December is good for everybody? I'm just joking, I'm just kidding, I'm just joking.
No, I didn't, but I.
No, I have a wrestling meet to get to, so come on, let's get through this.
Alrighty.
So the motion is, Michelle, to approve as is? You made the motion.
For, yes, for 4.3.
And Nancy agrees?
I do.
Okay. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.4. I'd like to call for a motion to take agenda item 3.2.6, Soul Source Academic Intervention Software from the November meeting from the table.
So moved. Second. We need a motion.
We need a vote on the motion to remove.
We, right, we need to vote to bring it back off the table. Just, we're taking the, in the last meeting, we table an item for Soul Source Academic Intervention Software. We were asked by Matt Sevitzin to pull it.
This is not a debatable motion, so there should be no discussion on it.
All right, that's what we do. So we need a vote?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we go to item 4.4.1, the Approval of Soul Source Academic Intervention Software. And I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Can I ask what the concerns were now at this point? Brian? Now that the motion's on the table, what were the concerns before?
Matt, are you available to answer that?
So the academic intervention software was, is up for renewal. And so what we did was, we have had it on the Board agenda in November. Unfortunately, as we started looking at it, as the Board meeting got closer and we started looking at it, we wanted to go back to the company and try and renegotiate a little bit better deal. We found something that we didn't particularly like, so we did ask for it to be pulled, tabled, whatever the verbiage we want to use. We were able to go back to the company and actually negotiate a better deal, so that's why we're bringing it back to the December meeting.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah, we're ready to vote, please, Karen.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.5, I'd like to call for a motion to take agenda item 4.1.4, Trustee Development Budget Policy 01.41.00 from the November meeting from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Item 4.5.1, The First Reading of Policy 01.41.00, Trustee Development Budget. I need a motion.
We're not approving it?
No.
It's a first read.
It's a first, okay.
It was taken.
Okay.
Motion to take it off.
Well, I.
Is that what we need?
I want to, I motion that one correct.
Were you ready?
Who motioned it?
To take it off the table.
To take, yes.
So it's available for first read now, so we can discuss the first read.
So we can discuss the first read? So that, does that mean that is on the agenda this month for first read, it will go on for second read next month?
Yes.
I would like that one sent back to committee, I think that's why we table, I thought that's why we tabled it, wasn't it, or no?
It was for more discussion and more learning of what was going on.
The trustee development budget?
Yeah.
Was.
So do you want a motion to send back?
That is correct.
Committee, is what.
That is correct, trustee Lee.
Thank you.
So if you want a motion.
That, that it was supposed to go back to committee. Okay.
You can amend your motion.
Okay, yes, that's why.
There's no motion pending, so there's no motion to amend.
Okay, so.
I would like to make a motion to refer it back to committee.
Regarding this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have a second? So we have a second to send it back to committee.
And I could do discussion. I've given you all a breakdown because I think we all need to look at what the, uh, details of our fees are, development budget. And just so you know, I did a whole breakdown of what the estimated for the ACCT conference was. I gave it, given it to our CFO. And if you look at the numbers, I've got what mine, Jim's, Michelle's, Diane's, uh, Alicia's, um, all of our accounts and what they are. And I'm still bringing this up because under trustee development, we need to know that really the budgets aren't satisfactory for us. Because right now, if you look at the corrections that need to be made from the ACCT account, because I'm still going to stand firm on this, that the ACCT account is for, for the leadership for trustee Lee and trustee Davis, not for trustee Bazinski or trustee Morales. Those have nothing to do with the ACCT. Nine years I've been involved with the ACCT and the ICCTA, and those are only for the delegate, that's the ICCTA rep who's also the ACCT rep, and the alternate is the same person that's the alternate for the ICCTA that is also the alternate for the ACCT. Because they know what's going on at these meetings locally, and locally what goes down to national. So I'm bringing this to you because if you look at all of these numbers, I mean, I, I use mine as the perfect example. These are just normal ones that are used for the ACCT, 3338, and the budget was 3,500 for each of us. When I look at the chairs, if you move all of his numbers around, and yes, he and, uh, trustee Lee did not get a better discount on their hotels, which is a shame because all of it should have ranged between 32 and 3,300 for our whole thing. And even looking at, and I had Dr. Nemo provide this to me too, on Karen, Karen went, and she was only there for a day minus us, and she was at almost 3,400. So the budget needs to be realigned and looked at, and trustee development needs to be in there for leadership too. Because right now, tomorrow is the deadline for leadership for the GLI, which I have to be at. I sent Dr. Nemo and the chair an email on the other things that need to be identified for attendance for leadership role, which is the president of the ICCTA. So I'm bringing this to you so you can see what is, that I've come up with. I spent hours on this one, working on it, working up numbers. I know that we just got a new one that shows what the numbers are, but you really need to new, move all of Chairman Bazinski's into his own account. And the unfortunate part is, he will be over the 11, $1,176 in his account. But we need to readjust and realign because it's been always the norm, and I've talked to the past two presidents too. The presidents stay out of it. It's normally a mutual agreement that the trustees who aren't using their funds say, yeah, you can. And I included in your package too, last year, where Alicia got the 42, 4,200.
Time has expired?
Well, here's the thing, I'm going to bring this up too, since we're talking about expiration. That was supposed to be for only when we did the ERP thing. It wasn't supposed to be for trustees when we're sitting at the table talking about things.
We still want to make sure that we incorporate it since it's part of our policy, so we can go ahead and give you about 20 seconds to wrap up, and then we can go ahead and continue to move.
Where is it in policy now? It's because the trustees should have the ability to talk and not be restricted.
We do. We have limited time.
It's the public comment that's restricted.
No, it is, uh, so I can bring up the policy for you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on. Just refer her to the policy. We're not going to rehash a policy that's not part of our agenda.
That's fine. That's fine. So I want you to look at it because when you're looking at the realignment of this, of this, of this item, you also need to take into consideration that it has always been the trustees that talk to each other to get money moved from one account to another when they're not using it. It's not so much the chair that does, that has anything to do with it or the president.
Can I report?
Oh one forty-five zero.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh one five five zero.
No, oh one four five zero zero.
Oh one four five zero zero.
I think if-
May I?
Trustee Morales?
Sure. So, um, it's your choice to be part of, um, the ACCT and all these other things, and I think you probably want to redirect your question to them and have them give you a budget so that you can attend their events.
Unfortunately, I'm going to say this. There was an agreement that was signed by our previous board that agree, that every time I ran for an office, it was agreed that there would be sponsorship. Karen Kissel, our CFO, has that letter, and you can't go back on that because the ICCTA does not have a budget, and we are all running for positions. Just like Dr. Nemo, he is now going to be on the ACCT presidential group. That's great.
I'm sorry, wait, so wait, there was a letter from the previous board-
Right.
That they agreed to fund things.
Right.
And this is a letter. This is not in policy. This is a letter from another board to which this board did not agree.
It's already when I ran for vice and when I ran for president.
I don't care what it's, if this board, that does, it doesn't-
Those were under that board.
Under that board. This is a completely different board. Um, I motion to move on.
Well, there's a pending motion. Can you call for a vote?
Yes, that's what-
It's a motion to refer the policy back to committee.
Yes.
And a second.
Yeah, it was done. That's been a motion to second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Can you explain exactly what it is that we're, uh, voting for?
You're voting to send this policy back to committee for review.
Um, I don't know that it needs to go back to review, so, uh, no.
Trustee Ellis?
No.
Trustee Bazinski?
No.
Motion carries. So it will go back to-
But if there is a letter, we need to relook at that letter, um, because that probably is not valid with the new board.
It was in existence when I went on as vice.
Okay, we can go ahead and move on.
Item four point six, taken of the November agenda, item four point one point nine, first read policy zero nine point zero six point zero zero, flag raising and displaying protocol for organizations and group flags. I'm calling for a motion.
I move that that motion on this item be postponed indefinitely.
Has to be taken from the table first.
We have to take from the table.
From the table.
We have to take from the table.
I motion that it not be moved from the table.
You, you, you can't make a motion that it not be removed from the table.
Then I move the motion be delayed on this item to postpone it.
So what we can do, we have to take a motion on whether or not to take it from the table. That motion is up to be either passed or failed, but we have to make a motion to take it from the table.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, you don't have to make a motion to do that.
Okay.
That's what was proposed. This item's on the table.
Okay.
As long as it sits on the table, it does not get addressed. So your motion cannot be made to postpone it. It's sitting on the table right now. If somebody wants to make a motion to remove it from the table, and if that motion gets seconded, then it'll be voted upon.
Okay.
If that vote passes, it's now on the table, and then other motions can be made.
Point of order then? Point of order?
Sure.
Point of order on this motion, it does not say anything from the table. It says taking a-
That is a typographical error.
Uh, I'm just calling that out.
That's fine. It's, it's in line with the prior two items.
Can you remind me next steps, what this actually means? So someone can bring it up to the table, uh, whatever table it is on, um, that we can bring it to the table to be voted on, and then all of us will vote on it. Is that correct?
I'll try to explain.
Please.
This is very archaic.
Please.
So way back in the day, when there were meetings like this, when they were talking about things, they would be brought forth to the board. And if the board didn't want to address it at that time, they would lay it on the table. So there was literally a table on the side of the room.
On the side.
And they'd lay it down on the table, and it would stay there.
Yeah.
And it has to stay there and cannot be considered by this board unless there's a motion to take it from the table and bring it back before the board. So that's where it's at right now. It's kind of like in no man's land.
So I make a motion to bring it up and remove it from the table.
Is there a second?
A second.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
I'll stay.
Trustee Bazinski?
No.
Motion's lost.
Item five point one, student trustee report.
Hello, everyone. This semester has been quite an experience. At the beginning of my term, our college welcomed a new strategic plan, one of the objectives being valuing diversity and cultivating belonging by connecting and engaging our diverse students to support their equitable access, growth, and connection to the college. Our core values state that Joliet Junior College is committed to providing a diverse and inclusive experience for all faculty, students, and staff. Throughout the semester, I have witnessed our administration, college employees, faculty, and student organizations honor this commitment through various initiatives and events. I am very proud of the progress that has been made, the ability we've had to learn from each other, and the support provided from our administration, students, college employee, employees, and faculty. I am honored to attend a college that celebrates diverse, the diversity of its students and employees, and let's continue to make progress. To kick off my report, I would like to recognize our student athletes of the week. Congratulations to Kaia Robertson, who plays on our women's basketball team, and has been named the National Basketball, National Junior College Athletic Association Division III, Region IV Player of the Week, and to Alex Vasilakis, a member of our men's basketball team. On behalf of our sustainability union, I would like to mention that they are encouraging those interested to ditch disposables and save money by investing in our sustainable reusable options available in the cafeteria as well as the sustainably sourced products available at the bookstore. A portion of the profits will be used to benefit sustainability at JJC. This semester, Comfort Zone has been a great success. Just to remind the board, Comfort Zone is an event that takes place on Tuesday evenings from 4:30 to 6:00 PM, providing free soup and drinks to students who remain on campus. It also features live student performances and creates a safe environment for students to gather. With these, with this event this semester, we have made 320 student contacts and have provided 156 students with support. The last collegiate club council meeting of the semester took place on Wednesday, December 6. Throughout the semester, student organizations have managed to balance campus life with academics. I am incredibly proud of the level of passion and diversity that exists within our student organizations. Student leaders have worked collaboratively to provide inclusive and safe environments for all students. On Monday, November 20th, our student organization Pride Alliance held a transgender day of remembrance memorial display to honor and raise awareness for transgender and gender nonconforming lives that were lost as a result of transphobia and violence. Our college is continuing to be an inclusive community and place where all are welcome and accepted no matter how they identify. On Wednesday, November 29th, I along with other students involved in the Center of Multicultural Access and Success attended a field trip to Roosevelt University and saw the Broadway show Hamilton. It was an amazing experience, and I want to express my gratitude to CMOs for providing me and my peers with this opportunity. Thank you. The Office of Student Activities hosted the World AIDS, the World AIDS Drag Show on Thursday, November 30th for the first time since 2014. The event helped raise over $1,200 for HIV and AIDS prevention and resources. I'd like to share a direct quote from one of my peers who attended the show. "I am so grateful this amazing drag show was brought to JJC. I felt a whole plethora of emotions during the show, but overall I felt gratitude that a much needed light was shined onto AIDS, and with the amount of money we raised for charities that are meant to support those with AIDS. I'm so glad that this event was hosted so close to home." Last week, the Office of Student Activities teamed up with the Mental Health and Wellness Advocates Tutoring and Learning Center and Diversity of Equity and Inclusion Office to organize a series of events for Stress Relief Week. The events included a relaxation workshop, Wellness Day, and a peace circle focusing on stress relief and burnout. This past Friday, Professor Margot Underwood and all those who assisted, thanks to Professor Margot Underwood and all those who assisted, we also hosted Foster Palooza. There were around 350 community members in attendance, and they were provided with food, clothing, toys, activities, free haircuts, and hairstyles, as well as pictures with Santa. I would also like to acknowledge all of the volunteers, especially my peers. I was impressed to see students come together and take advantage of this opportunity to serve our community while balancing the stress of finals. This week, the Office of Student Activities organized therapy dogs and PBJs. They frequently host this event during the week of finals to provide support for students. It's a much awaited event on campus, and I would like to express my gratitude to all of the volunteers who prepared free sandwiches for students. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Can we ask any questions?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, when you talked about the, was it the drag show? Did we have any HIV testing, or where do we send the funds for it, and how many people attended?
So I can get you numbers on how many people attended. This was an organization who came to campus and collaborated with the Office of Student Activities to put on the event. As far as HIV testing on campus, we do offer that also.
So we had it that night that they had the drag show?
It wasn't there that night, but we do typically provide it on campus.
So we do have that on campus?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question also. Um, back in the 90s, a long time ago, I, I was the advisor for the Latinos Unidos Student Club Organization. Does each club have their own advisor, or is it like the same advisor that, like, just does the diversity groups like the African American Student Union? Who is the new advisor for Latinos Unidos?
Actually, we have four.
Four advisors?
So every club, so you have four for one? Okay, that's good, because I know it's big. I know, you guys needed more than one. Because even back then, it was a lot just for one. Um, and then, so then, uh, does the, like, the Black Student Union also have their own?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, I think, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Is there any way too that we can get the calendar of your events, like, the month before, so we know what's going? Because I usually see it when I see social media. Is there any way that we can see what's on your, your calendar of events? Do we have it in there right now? But see, that's for December already, so we're already 15 days past, almost.
Uh, we can provide you a link. We have a live link. It should be available about a week before, the next, um, month.
If you could do that, that would, that would be great.
There's a link that you can just click. I can share that unit's updated every month. And also for the track show, we have about 100 people attend, 100.
100? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Item five point two, representative to the JJC Foundation, Ms. Kristi Mulby.
Got a whole book of reports. No, I'm kidding. Um, real quick, um, first of all, on behalf of the, uh, JJC Foundation Board, there's 26 strong. I wish all of you a safe and happy holiday and, um, and break. As you know, Dr. Nemo talked about the presidential party and us raising, um, actually, it was $20 off. Um, we, uh, the holiday baskets made 8320, which brought his scholarship for first generation students to $43,000, $47. And we know, um, that there is, um, a set of parents that, um, have a $5,000 check coming again this year for that scholarship, and it's on its way. So by the time we get that, we will be at 48,000, 4,700, or $47. Guys, this is in just a little over a year. Um, we've, we've raised that for, um, Klein's Nemo family scholarship for first generation students, and this is really a wonderful thing, and, um, next fall will be the first cohort of students that receive that. So we're at 48,000, 47 right now, and it's still time for people to give to it by the end of the year.
Nice.
As you know, we use the bell tower, um, as our logo, and the bell tower sits in front of this aid building. And we were able to recognize the man that basically designed, um, that bell tower, Mr. Victor Corsetti, a couple months ago. And I'm pleased to announce that, um, Victor came, um, after we had recognized him and really wanted to give back to the school, and gave us a check for $50,000 for an endowed scholarship. So we thank him for his generous support. Um, and then I want to thank trustee Ellis, who volunteered with a bunch of our employees and students, again, for the pop-up. She showed it on the screen. This was only the second year, and we sold out at 250. Um, this was in a result of alumni survey. We asked our alums, what do you want us to do, what kind of activities? And they said, we want a family activity to be able to bring our stu, our kids back on campus. And so it was a successful second year event. We sold out at 250 and hoping to take more next year. If there's not any questions, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
I do have one. Kristi, I do have one. Chair, am I okay to ask? Um, I know that that pop-up was a great thing. I heard it was great. And I know you've always been one that definitely special, or promotes having trustees there. Do you not want, do you want trustees to come to this as a vision that you're there, that we're supporting it? Not that we're involved doing anything, but that we're just there as a visibility of being supportive to you?
I think it depends on the event. I know we had, um, uh, Jake come with his kids. He had bought tickets to come, so we knew we were covered with two. But we'd appreciate any, any, any attendance. It was just a bunch of families and kids, and we knew we were already-
It was just a bunch of families and kids, and we knew we were already sold out, and we knew we had two trustees going to the event.
Well, I know that you've always promoted, since I came on board in 2015, that you want to see trustee visibility. And I think it's advocacy that we're there. So if that be the case, if we can just get notifications and confirmation that we're coming, that would be great.
All we said was cookies and hot chocolate and Santa Claus for the kids. We said we're going.
They said yay, right?
Your kids look great.
And thank you, Jake, for trustee Mahalik for buying tickets.
It was a great time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice time on, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work.
Item five point three, representative to the ICCTA slash ACCT.
There is no meeting this month, and I have no report.
Okay. Item four, I'm sorry, five point four, trustee updates. We've heard from Ayesha. Jake?
I have no updates.
Trustee Garcia again?
No updates at this time.
Trustee Harris?
Yeah, just a couple of words. I was able to attend the GLI in Bloomington, and I just want to say, I've been to a few other conferences, but this one was the best. Really enjoyed it. They really got into the nuts and bolts of boards and presidents and how they come together to create a powerful board. I'm not going to get into all of it. What I may do is just type up a few notes and maybe send it to our president and Jim, our chairperson, and then maybe he can send it out. But I am grateful for the opportunity to attend, and I am committed to working with my fellow board members, president, so that I do my part in making this a powerful board for the higher education here at JJC. Thank you.
Trustee?
And don't forget, the nominations are, we're going to meet on February twenty-fourth, so I want you to start thinking and getting those in, because I know there are a lot of qualified individuals for these awards. Thank you.
Trustee Lee?
No. No updates.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes. Just in conclusion with that, it's two-twenty-three that we have to have our nominations in by, so two-twenty-three. And then trustee allocations, I'm still going to bring that up as an item that we should have and talk about because that needs to be brought forth so that people can go to things, because a lot of money has been expensed. The GLI is two-four to two-eight. The registration for early is tomorrow, twelve-fourteen. And I think that, and I'm going to ask this, that I should be there because I'm the ICCTA president, we have meetings there, as ICCTA, so I should ask if you're okay to have her register me, because this is something that I should be at. And also, I want to let you know, I'm glad to hear that Dr. Nmoo is on the ACC Presidential Committee. I was asked to be on ACCT committees, but I didn't receive a letter of sponsorship, and that's something we should really look at, expanding the abilities of our members and taking personality out and letting our trustees, who don't make anything doing this, we're just volunteers, to be involved. And I do ask for more trustee visibility and advocacy so that we are more present in anything that's local, that we can be involved in and know about. I also ask about the ERP restart. I saw that, that Dr. Farmer had done. And I don't know if I should give this to you separately on some of the things that I think we should talk about, or if I should say it here, because there's some things that I wanted to ask and have maybe on the agenda. And I know that we're spending millions of dollars, but I want to know what we're doing today and what will improve. And there's a bunch of things that I have listed. Can I provide that to you? Okay, I will do that.
Thank you, trustee Bradrick.
And then, what else was there? Oh, cost of mailers. Guys, I got three. So I think we need to relook, because I don't need to look through three of these things that are the same thing. So if we can do that, that would be great. And then my last item is, and I think this is of concern, is that last night, the Community College of Lake County had their meeting, their board meeting, and their CIO got up there and was very positioned to say why JJC failed with Workday. And I had shared this with Dr. Nmoo, that they said it was all because of a disconnect, because of administration. And I felt that, they said it was new leadership that went with a different vision. There was no one dedicated to the transition. And I think that we should do something to correct that, because that's not what the reason was of why we didn't succeed with Workday. So I'm sharing that with you, because I think listening to that was concerning.
Well, I think that if you think about the definition of success and the different meetings that we have and everybody's definition of success, you know, then there's something to speculate on that.
Point of order.
Sorry.
Trustee Morales?
I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year, and that's it. And thank you all for sitting through all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to honor somebody that sits up here as a student trustee. Ms. Ayesha Ellis has been nominated, or actually has been awarded, the Rotary Student Other Month of December. We are very fortunate that the staff, the trustees, and everyone in this community supports our student trustees. We ask them to do more than any other college. When we travel, people are shocked at the involvement our student trustees have. They can't believe they're in board meetings. They can't believe we actually listen to their input. They can't believe some of the things we're asking them to do. So we know they stand above what we see at other colleges, and we're just so grateful for Ayesha this year and what she's been doing. And it's just a great face that the college or the other colleges see. Since we won't be in session before the next two items, Diane has a birthday on January fourth. Alicia has a birthday on January tenth. Age is to be disclosed in private.
I stopped counting. Ten years ago, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
And a statement for the chair report. As we end our last meeting of 2023, I want to emphasize that the Board of Trustees embraces the core values of this college. There is one core value that I want to highlight today specifically, and that is respect and inclusion. Last month, the board tabled a proposed policy on flag raising and displayed protocol for group flags on campus. This policy was intended to provide another way to celebrate our diverse student organizations and student identities. We realize that tabling this vote may have given the perception that the board is not supportive of this policy. That is not the case. We want to approve a policy that provides a clear and equitable path to recognizing the diversity of our students, their cultures, and their identities. We are working on it, and we want to get it right. That's what our students and campus community deserve. As a board, we'll continue to uphold our core values, and those values will continue to drive our decisions and our actions. And most importantly, we will always support what is best for our students. Merry Christmas, everyone, and we'll see you in January.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Can you share? Because you were going to, Dr. Nmoo said you were going to share what happened at the cabinet retreat. Can you share? Because...
No, no, no. So...
I motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Point of order, morning.
Ask him after the meeting.
At the chair retreat, or at the cabinet retreat, I snuck over there during work. Quite honestly, I thought I was going over there for the food, but I had to go back to work before it was served, and I got back after they were done serving it. I did tell them not to take the picture till I got back, and unfortunately, other people had to leave. So unfortunately, Monica from Grundy County had missed the picture, and that was my fault. I'll never do that again. I didn't want to be in the picture to begin with. Although Kristy's group did a great job at raising all the money, I think Dr. Farmer, Kelly, and I actually won, based on the rules. Based on the rules.